So I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order for our work session. Tonight for council, I'm gonna do a quick review of our agenda this evening. And if there's any questions for staff to start preparing for our meeting, please let me know. And so on your consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from November 16th and 30th. Is there any questions on that? Okay, under ordinances, we have ordinance 2020-25 up for second reading. Any questions on that before we go into this evening? Okay, and then resolutions, we have to have a conversation on our master fee schedule update. Questions? And then we have some planning commission appointments. Okay, with that, tonight for our work session, like I mentioned, we're having a conversation on kind of a brief update on work done. And then decisions that will be in front of council in the future for the Sandy community campus. Since we do have some new members joining us tonight, just kind of a reminder. So kind of the way we work it here is with questions and opportunities to speak, just to hand up. And we go ahead and call on you for your opportunity to speak at that time during the presentation. I can't see you, so if you have questions, it's just kind of honor system. Just go ahead and jump in, ask any questions. Obviously, we try to keep any hefty questions to the end, but if you feel it's time sensitive, please feel free to ask staff any questions as they go through their presentation. With that, Jordan, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you.
So I'll make it easy on you, Mayor, because I'm not going to do a presentation.
Okay, great.
Well, this is a virtual roundtable discussion and conversation about the community campus. And really as a check in that the council saw it after discussing with the council the results of the survey and the polling back in May. So really, this was designed as a check in on a few things, recognizing that we're gonna have a lot of conversation about the community campus and the pool at goal setting and the budget. But this will give us at least a running start towards those conversations. And I think there's some things that we can probably do in the interim. You know, obviously, we don't want to make any decisions and big decisions during a work session. But there's some things that we've been working on based on input from the last meeting. So checking in on that and if we can continue to proceed on those. But this gives us a chance, it's like one of those things with the work session, right? When in doubt, just put community campus on there and we'll fill the time, right? Always something to talk about. But there's a couple recent, I think, some progress that we've made with the Parks Master Plan that provides a good opportunity right now to do a check in. And then, like I said, with the goal setting coming up and the budget development, it's a good chance to start thinking about these things and maybe have a preliminary conversation about where we may be headed in the next year, two years, three years, and four. So a couple of the topics that we wanted to check in with you, the easy one first. Back in May, there was conversation about some of the things that we could be moving forward with, that we would want to revisit in the fall. One was demolition of the buildings. Of course, I said easier, easy one, but it's always more difficult than that. But we started by issuing an RFQ for a project manager to help with that demolition. And we're expecting proposals back.
Jordan, will you be clear on what buildings you're talking about?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Yes, just the front buildings of the middle school, the old middle school. So the gym and the original middle school buildings, not the bunker building and not the pool. So there was some talk, some interest from the city council, a couple of councillors about just moving forward with that demolition. Because regardless of the outcome of the community campus, those buildings will come down as we put in plans into place. They're old, they need a lot of work, they don't have a lot of residual value. The difficulty with the demolition and why we need a little bit of project assistance with that is the utility interconnectedness. So having to rerun some lines with the water and boilers and stuff and electrical and natural gas. And then there's also some asbestos and hazardous materials that we need to mitigate. So it's a lot easier to farm that out. But it is cost effective to do that sooner than later. And it also shows that we're kind of moving in the direction of developing the property and getting it ready for future improvements, whether that's a rec center, pool expansion, park improvements. So we were continuing to do work on that, so we wanted to check in with the council on whether any reason to stop that or change the scope of work on that. But that should be happening over the next few months and probably can give another update at goal setting. The other recent development is the Parks Master Plan, which has provided another great opportunity to get input on some of the priorities and concepts that have already been developed for the community campus, at least the park portion. As you recall, Opsys did that big master plan study that wasn't that well received due to the cost. And I think the multi-phasing and sort of the, you know, just the vision for that project. But what we did is we took the first phase of the park improvements, the proposed park concept, and floated that to the community through this virtual town hall that we did for the master plan and provide the opportunity for people to comment on it, whether they liked it, what would they like to see in the first phase down there? What amenities are the most important for park improvements there? And so we got some good input and feedback on that. And what we found, I think, and I wasn't at the TAC meeting, I met with the consultants, but I think they discussed this at the TAC meeting last week. But I would say that the results that I saw from the virtual town hall was that they're pretty consistent with what we heard in the community survey that we commissioned back before May. So back in, what was that, March, January, almost a year ago with the first community survey. So things like skate park came up a lot in the virtual town hall, pump track, access to the river, and, you know, playground, we're all top amenities that I think that were consistent with what we've heard before and what the concept had, either in the phase one or other phases. So I think there's some good news there that there is a lot of consistency, a lot of consensus building around what amenities people would like to see in initial park improvements at the campus. And I think that the decision and the kind of the conversation for council is, you know, do we have the information now, enough information, to start moving forward with park improvements? And the big decision there is pumping money into that park improvement, to that first phase. Because there is $3 million left in urban renewal for the community campus project. But that $3 million could be used for the pool, could be used for, you know, other recreational amenities or other improvements at the campus, or it can be used for this park project. And one, you know, one thing that we could do is if there is interest in finally, you know, kind of breaking ground on something, getting a demolition going, is start to look at moving forward with a design for phase one with this community input, do much more community input to bring stakeholders in as we move forward with options there. And then look at what the scope and options would be for developing those first, that first phase. So that's an idea just, you know, to put out there is, that's one thing that we can do. We have money in the bank if we want to prioritize making the park improvements and spending that money. We now have, you know, some input now, we're getting, you know, close to having a draft master plan. And I think there, like I said, consensus around, you know, amenities like a pump track, skate park, playground, parking, and access to the river, that way maybe we can scope out and see what we can do coming up this next year with the design. So that's one thing, yeah.
A quick question on that. So is there a reason you're wanting to seek our opinion on that this evening prior to goal setting and the installation of the new council? And the only reason I ask that for that portion is the demolition, you know, that we're doing. Is there some cost savings or time savings or anything that take place if we, you know, do those projects, you know, together? Or is it just kind of starting the conversation of that second phase now? And we'll also continue to talk about that going into goal setting.
It's a good question. I don't know, it might be a yes or no answer, honestly, because demolition will have kind of specialized work that needs to be done, right? Versus just earthwork and things that would be done for the, for the park. It's worth looking into, though. The only reason is to bring this up as a check in is there's, if there is sort of, you know, and it's great to see the councillor elects here too, is if there is sort of like, yeah, that's kind of the direction we want to head. There's some things that we can start doing, right? It's drafting an RFP or start to, you know, kind of scope that out. And then as, you know, council sets a goal to do something like that, we can, you know, good, we got, we got things already in the hopper that we can move forward with. Doesn't mean we need to start the project or issue it yet.
Yep, Don has a question, then I'll go to Jan.
Rich Sheldon is looking for an invite. He did not get one and he was just sending me a text.
Okay, I will follow up with him.
Thank you.
Not sure what happened there, but we'll make sure he gets him. Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don, appreciate that. Jan?
Yeah, one of the comments I made to Sarah about the park plan was it's really hard to make some of those decisions with no costs. So I bring that up again when we're looking at going into the first phase. We really have no cost estimate, so I'm hoping we can acquire some of those before there's a decision.
Agreed. Lori?
Yeah, so I was gonna make the same comment that Jan just did, you know, when there's no cost associated, it's kind of hard to choose a direction to move forward. My other comment is that if we're gonna demo both buildings moving forward, you know, depending on what the decisions are with the pool, that changes, you know, what we have for parking and square footage of an area that we have to work with and whatnot. So I don't know that we can really make any of these decisions until, until that elephant in the room is dealt with.
The elephant being the pool?
Cool, yep.
Carl?
Yeah, I guess I'd say ditto with what Jan and Lori were saying, as far as the cost goes, a little concerned about that. And I think we do have a pool issue that I know a number of folks that never give up calling me or letting me know that that's something they want to see us moving forward on. And quite frankly, I want to remind everybody that I really have a struggle with tearing down that gym. I think that gym has more value than what we give it credit for. And I think without having a chance to look at some of the costs and making sure we know what we're doing here, and then add to the fact that we have new councillors showing up in January, I think we can sure talk about it and get everybody up to speed on info. I would love to see us get more information and get our new councillors on board before we start talking about where that thing has to be and where we want to go.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm gonna go to Kathleen before I say my piece. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Kathleen, you should be able to just unmute yourself since you're a panelist. There you go.
Thank you, my mouse is all messed up today. No, I just, because I'm not quite, wasn't clear on what costs you're looking for. They will have quite a bit of specific costs for the pump track. Like Hood River did a pump track for $200,000. That was very, it's great. There's, they will have costs for the skate park, the pump track, the playground, those kind of things that you were talking about. And I think you already have some of the costs for the pool. So I wasn't sure if you were talking maybe about the cost for demoing the buildings or which costs you're looking for. They'll have those costs lined out, you know, by January for the other facilities.
Yeah, because, you know, and I definitely get it. And I'm definitely willing to hear from the councillor elects if you guys are not comfortable with the demolition piece of this for some reason. Because I do know that, you know, our councils, and we've sat down and read Opsys reports, you know, Kathleen and I had a conversation, I know Kathleen's read that report, you know, about what it, kind of how that went through and really detailed the conditions of some of those facilities. A lot of us participated in a walk through of those. I know that there's definitely current councillors that are probably comfortable with a decision on demolition at this point, knowing the nature of those buildings and the fact that they're really not going to be able to be repurposed. But I also want to, you know, be respectful and understand that there are now councillors that are part of our team that have not necessarily been put up to speed on some of those reports and may not be at a point of saying, you know, yeah, we're a go for demolition. But I just, I'm comfortable because of where I am, you know, at learning, you know, the conditions of these buildings. But to the point, we have a lot to talk about with the pool and the future for the pool. But I don't view the future of the pool being dependent at all on these buildings that we're talking about demoing. If anything, it just allows us to kind of move forward so that when we do want to do stuff with the pool, we're not having to demo buildings first before we, before we do it. But again, you know, if we want to wait and, you know, get up to speed, totally cool. But I just, you know, kind of want to take the temperature of everybody on, on this demolition. I know councillor Exner has some concerns. We've had a lot of conversations on that basketball court, I know. And I'll be quiet here in a second and let Jeremy have his turn on this, because I know where he's gonna be on. He's been a big proponent on courts, you know, a lot of us know that we want that available for a lot of our youth in town. It's just knowing the, walking through that facility, knowing the condition of that building, knowing the access problems with that, the ADA concerns, you know, there's safety issues with that building, opening up for athletics. It's just, I don't view that, this facility as a viable option for what we're going to have to spend tax dollar money on to bring it up to being able to use when it's not part of our long-term plan as a facility here in this community. I think Carl will probably have some words to say in response to that, but Jeremy's next up in the queue.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Yeah, so I mean, I've been a big proponent of going ahead and getting started with demolition of the Cedar Ridge building, knowing that it needed to happen and, you know, why keep pushing it off in office? The price increases to get it demolished, demolition done on that building going forward. If we're gonna sit around for four or five years and have it be the ice ore that it is, and it needs to come down, we all know that. Those that have walked through it and gone through the reports and everything like it. Whether we do something with the pool or not, that building was still going to come down. And so my thing was to save money now and be able to tear it down and get the ice ore out so that it's prepped and ready for that next step, whatever we decide that next step is and going forward with the next goal setting session of that. Now, do we add the pool to be demolition or not and then build a new pool altogether? I mean, that's a bigger conversation and I mean, I'm willing to obviously wait and talk more about that more in depth, for sure. When it comes around the basketball courts, yes, I'm a big proponent of we need more courts. I mean, here I am with three kids, not this year, they're not playing in any sports. I mean, and Kathleen knows, you know, I was on the parks board with her for a long time. And, you know, I didn't visit a park really except mining until I had kids and, you know, and then I realized the value these parks had, right, and all this. You know, the value of me watching my kids being driven all the way into Gresham or into Estacada to get a gymnasium space to practice, we practice more in Estacada. And I think, man, this is just really wrong for our community. So I don't need to get in my soapbox right now. But on the other flip side, I mean, I'll give both sides of every picture that I see is in reviewing and knowing all about that, are we giving it justice to keep that particular gym open? What I fought for before was to allow us to use that gym until it was demolition and we had a plan going forward. You know, sitting there with years of space and all the coaches that used to practice in it the year before. And because it shut down, we could no longer practice in it, which is the biggest sin in the world to me. But with it down, then we need to, you know, move forward and we build new gym or whatever that is, right, in that space or around that space or how that gets integrated in there for a gymnasium space. Of course, it's something I really want to see. So thank you, Carl, for hopping on my bandwagon of seeing that we need more gym space, and we really do. I mean, our kids need it, I mean, it's, just go to any of the courts, there's not enough of it in Sandy or in the area. But for the building sake of things, I still value the getting it down and having that clean slate to be able to move forward and build something, because as long as it's there, we're still six, eight months out before we can do anything with it, that building. Now, can we join and save money if we're gonna rebuild a pool? That's a discussion that we're going to need to have, but that's my, my take on that piece of it.
Sorry, Mayor, just wanted to let you know that councillor Alex Sheldon is here now as well, although I don't think he has his video on. So not sure if you wanted to reiterate in terms of raising hands and that stuff. I think you're muted, Mayor.
Obviously, councillor Alex Sheldon, if you'd like to participate, just feel free to jump in. If your video's not working, no one's gonna get too upset if you just try to speak up in the middle of the conversation. Definitely understand, if you are able to mute when not speaking, that would be appreciated as that way we can avoid background noise. Okay, with that, Carl, go ahead, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I guess I have such a strong feeling about the gym being able to be used that it's hard for me not to just say I want to keep it for the long term. But I realize that this thing is really not a long-term facility for us. We'll have to tear it down sometime soon. But in relation to that, we have a plan built by Opsys that shows us $65 million, $75 million. And there's just absolutely no way that's gonna be something we're gonna be able to do, no matter what kind of economy we're in, what kind of grants we get, no matter what kind of taxes we provide on our top of our citizens. So what we're, I think we're gonna need to do is need to find something that gives us a strategy. Sure, let's tear down some buildings if it's gonna cost more to wait. Certainly gives us an opportunity to do some things that are more flexible by being able to have those buildings down. I know that the classroom side of that stuff is just unusable completely. I think we could be using, it wasn't for the coronavirus, but I think I'd really be an advocate of, and I think we'd all be sorry if we didn't have some kind of strategy to do with this piece of property other than spending $65 million. But I'd like to be able to see something that comes up. We've talked about what Madras did here a year or two ago. And certainly those are things that we could be doing if we want to go forward on a pool. But obviously, our polling has just shown us this is not the appropriate time for that. So all that in the mix, to me, I just think we need to have a little bit better strength in our plan of some kind. And I haven't heard from Jordan yet about how strong his feelings are about saving money now by tearing it down versus waiting until we have a little bit more knowledge about our finances and what kind of strategy.
I just don't hear a plan, there's just no plan that doesn't involve, that involves those buildings. So there's just no plan that involves the buildings. Lori and then Jan.
The other piece that we have to consider when moving forward with all of this is we have to have the ability to maintain it, right? So it's a wonderful idea, I mean, I'm all for having courts and facilities and sport courts and all of that. But I don't see where we have it in our budget, knowing what our budget is, to maintain a lot of those facilities if we do have them. So it would be foolish on our part, I believe, and short sighted to move forward with a, with an extravagant plan and not have a plan in place for maintenance.
I agree, I think as part of any, and I think the Opsys plan had some of that operational analysis in there. But as part of any plan for constructing more recreational facilities or expanded pool, we need to have that operational analysis and a plan in place to, what's it gonna cost? What's the cost recovery and how are we gonna pay for that? Because it will, I mean, it's not gonna be 100% cost recovery if we're talking about a recreational center, at least not in the short term. And, you know, that's gonna be a general fund subsidy, especially if there's a pool element. So I'm happy to switch gears to talking about a pool. To answer councillor, oh, I was gonna answer councillor Exner's question really quick. I, I'll just put it back to the council. If the council, you know, has the direction that, you know, there's not gonna be a reuse of the buildings there. You've toured them, you've read the reports, there's not a lot of, you know, value in keeping those. Even the Opsys plan just had the bunker building and the pool integrated into the expensive facility. So if there isn't any value and we're not gonna do any kind of reuse through putting more, you know, investment into that, then, you know, I don't see a reason why not, you know, getting them out of the way makes our lives a little bit easier in planning for the future.
I'm gonna go to Jan and then Bethany.
Yeah, I agree with Lori's comments, but another thought I had was if the building is torn down, is it possible that you might have an outdoor basketball court for a while until the bunker building or some other facility is redone? Just putting it in the pile of ideas, but not mentioning it for now.
Thank you. Bethany?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, after seeing the buildings and hearing all the reports on them, I don't, I don't see any reason to keep any of those. So I'm fine with moving forward, but I also understand waiting and seeing what everyone else feels as far as that goes. The campus itself and the park improvements, I'm a big proponent of moving forward with some of that. I mean, we use that all the time, my family does, a lot of other families do, like the track and the, we play soccer there. And I don't know, I think that some, that's what I've said all along, mild improvements, the trail system there that we can sort of do to sort of show, you know, movement. We have this beautiful piece of property and we've had it for a while and we're using it, but it's not pretty and it's not being used to the best of its abilities at this point. So maybe there's some lower level park improvement type stuff we can do kind of more immediately to, I don't know, get more use out of it. And like we had a gentleman on, what was that, a couple of months ago? And he's like, we go there, but it's kind of gross, like, can we, you know, spruce it up a bit? So, yeah, I would like to see us move forward at least with some of that outdoor kind of, I don't want to say simple. I know nothing is simple, but just kind of the beginnings of improvements for the land there.
Thank you. And that's where, I just want to say, that's where I'm at too. That said, you know, it's, it is urban renewal fund money that, that could potentially go towards any pool renovation type project. And so knowing some of those discussions that happened, you know, during the campaign, also knowing the passions by multiple councillors about, including myself, about the potential future of the pool. You know, I do think that we need to, I'm not necessarily comfortable spending too much money on improvements to the area until our future council kind of has a holistic weighing and conversation and stuff of the options and stuff of the pool. Where I am comfortable moving ahead at this point is on the demolitions of the buildings, because I just don't see any path forward that does not involve that demolition. Don, I saw a hand up and just a reminder, unmute, there you go.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Couple thoughts, first, first of all, is in relation to the pool and what the public sentiment is towards the pool. The recent survey, of course, excluded the pool, so any results there are, I think it's, it would be incorrect to kind of assume how the pool would stack up against those results. Second of all, and as such, I think it is the elephant, and we need to really figure out how we're going to address the pool needs. Obviously, that was a key part of my platform and it had, I was surprised and shocked at how well it resonated with people. It leads me to believe that the support for the pool is much higher than maybe we had thought. That doesn't mean that an over-the-top parks plan is going to meet with voter approval. But I think the right plan can meet with voter approval. Second point is maybe my own misunderstanding, but the Opsys reports that I've read, I would not consider them quality in terms of their estimates and their, even some of their conclusions. So that, that makes me question at this point, given what I have seen, the justification in doing the demo right now without perhaps having a second opinion or a second look on that, because this is not a reversible decision. Once you move ahead with that, we are locked into new construction and something else as opposed to perhaps a more moderate plan that might preserve some of those features. So I know, you know, we're still early in this game, but I think it might be, my recommendation is wait until January to give the new council a chance to weigh in on these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Really appreciate that feedback. Laurie?
Yeah, and on that, a couple of things. First, I'd like to know, I'd like to find out, Jordan, if, say, we were to come to a place where we decided we were going to demo the current pool. If I would, I would not want to spend excess money, so meaning that if there's some sort of deal to be had by demoing both of those buildings at the same time versus demoing one and then demoing one later, I'd like to know that information. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, you know, what is it cost to, you're talking about the third, adding a third building to the pool?
Yeah, you know, so if it's, hey, we've only got to bring the wrecking ball and the crane out one time and we only have to do this once versus if we have to do it twice, you know, what the cost difference is. Maybe there isn't one. I'd be surprised, but you never know. And because it'd be good to know that information.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, I agree. I would agree. Dawn, the Opsys report, when it was done here, what, three years ago? Really, I questioned it a lot. I know I didn't get a lot of participation for myself into it because I was kind of excluded in some ways from that process, but that's a different story. But in that, I also believe that all the council elects should have a tour of it. And maybe, Jordan, you can do this and along with us so that we're seeing it at the same time, you know, like, let's have it, you know, six o'clock. So everyone's off work or whatever and can make it there together, because then we're seeing it with the same time. And so it's not just like, I've seen it many times over and I'm sure it's in worse condition than it was the last time I saw it. But we can together say, like, look, this is, you know, that's what I mean by, look at that rotten spot or whatever, remember that or this. I think it just gives us a better advantage going through as we talk about this, you know, in January and beyond. As well as Lori and what she said there, that I think, you know, we can wait to decide on the demolition part of it until afterwards. When we decide, did Opsys really, you know, kind of make a smart decision in the fact of, let's try to keep this versus like tearing down a fifty-seven-year-old pool and get efficiencies out of it? Was always the struggle I've had since I was first on the thing, committee to help save the pool years ago, was, you know, is there efficiencies in that and not just tearing it down? But when demolition, demolition, I can't even say the word, when you tear down both buildings, you're not going to have to rework some of the gas lines and the power lines and the steam lines between the two buildings that we talked about before. So there will be cost savings, I believe, in that aspect of it, because we'll just be redirecting it down to the bunker building versus trying to keep those things alive. But that would be my suggestion. It would be, you know, have this discussion now as we talk about it. But then also, you know, even before January, you know, if there's a time after work sometime, we can all do a tour together of those buildings, I think would help get, put everyone on the same page.
Yeah, and something too to just kind of say what Dawn said about Opsys is I can't think of a single counselor on screen that is satisfied with that Opsys report. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, see, yeah. Kathleen?
Yeah, it's, it seems like there's a lot of different topics going on with, you know, tearing down the pool, tearing down the school building, doing some short-term, more immediate development on the community campus part. And then the efficiencies, like you said, of kind of trying to tie some, either the, you know, demolition together or the demolition of the school buildings with the short-term construction of some of the park developments. You know, there's, it seems like there's just a lot of moving parts there. And having, to some extent, you're going to have a Parks Master Plan that has a lot of the costs and all that stuff lined out here in January. So having more information might help kind of enrich the, you know, the options or just kind of clarify some of the options. See, it does seem like we do need to kind of sit down about and kind of figure out the options of, you know, getting rid of the pool, keeping the pool, you know, and how do we pay for it and all of that. I'm not sure demoing the building, you know, I'm not saying that it shouldn't need to be done. It certainly does need to be done. But doing it right now before you've kind of got the other pieces, like you said, Laurie, is a little bit, I don't know. It could be, it could be more efficient to do, to look at kind of the bigger picture to see, you know, especially when you're putting out a scope of work for, for something, you know, you kind of want to make sure you get all the pieces that into the request for proposals when you go out for it. So I would just encourage us to maybe, you know, wait until you have kind of more of the facts and figures with the Parks Plan to, and some of your goal setting probably and things like that to kind of make the final decision. But I could see you guys going, you know, whichever way you want. So thanks for letting me comment.
Yeah, and just remember, Kathleen, that we're no longer testifying. It's us and we and ours now. We are, we're all, we're all here doing this together now as a team. So I'm starting to kind of hear a consensus to wait, but I'm also hearing some homework along the way.
Rich had a comment there too.
Oh, sorry, Rich. Yeah, before I, my mouth starts going. Rich, please go ahead. You're muted. Yep, there you go.
Hey, I want to apologize. First of all, zoom on your phone looks a little bit different. So my apologies for my early feedback. I'm sure I was providing you. Hey, on a different note though, for one, I, I understand that there's a lot of work that had already been put into this and seeing the conclusion of some of that. At the end, I can see the value there. But with three of us coming on newly, and quite frankly, reading the report isn't, doesn't sound like it does the actual tourist scene justice. So I really liked Jeremy's idea of us being able to go in there and get eyes on. And also to see what, if this report's three years, in what's changed in that three years. I'm quite sure it's not for the positive as buildings that sit for three years usually don't. But at least just to have a firsthand account and to be able to see what you read, I just think that there's immense value in that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, yeah, so I'm hearing kind of the consensus is a little bit more homework for all of us to get together and maybe staff to find an evening to propose to everyone, perhaps to a doodle pool, pole, pool for all of us to go out there and walk around and see, see the buildings together. Probably, obviously, it would have to be a public setting format. And then I think something else that would be helpful too, Jeff, is maybe working with Tyler and looking through just if there's any of, any past documents on some of the work that we've done on the pool. I know that we did a lot of visioning and stuff on a possible district and different things and memos that were worked up. Not trying to create too much homework for everyone, but just maybe we can get a packet emailed together of some information on the pool and the community campus for some of the stuff done over the last year and a half. And then let's all get together and, and walk around those buildings and get a good feel as an entire group on, on how we feel. Does that sound about right to everybody? Okay, great. So we still have twenty-two minutes. We can certainly do a recess before meeting, but since we have everybody together, is there any, is there any questions on the, on the pool or the community campus or topics that anybody wants to bring up before we have our goal setting? Dawn?
Lost my mouse there for a second. Hey, similar to the parks where there's a committee, could we put together a pool committee with just, you know, we have so many people who have different ideas, but we really need to, we need to get out of the box to make the pool cost-effective. Is that something that the current council would consider proposing and spinning up?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that is something that we should put together. And then I think we should probably have a council liaison from our team that, that works with that committee. I have a feeling as someone who would like to volunteer for that position and I'm certainly ready to make that appointment. And a couple of counselors. So, but let's, yes, absolutely, Dawn. And I, I think probably between now and our goal setting is for people to start brainstorming and thinking of good community members to serve on that committee and to bring those names forward. But, yeah, you know, so there was a lot of work that was done and then we went right, right into the middle of COVID-19 and coronavirus, especially with some of our surveys, work that was getting done. And, and so really the timeline that I think a lot of us were really kind of fixated on was obviously whether, it was just moved for us, you know, whether we liked it or not. And so now we're at a point where I think we really do need a community visioning and, you know, and to your point, kind of looking at some of the old options that have already been researched and really kind of thinking through some of those, but also matched up with some outside-the-box, private, you know, public partnerships, all those kinds of things as well. Jeremy and then Carl?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Don. I was actually the council liaison. Six, eight years ago, it felt like, more like, you know, twenty years ago. But when we were looking at being able, how to save the pool when the school district was shutting it down and had a committee there. And we got a lot of great value out of it, a lot of research done in that. So I think that's a very good idea on that. You'll learn quite a bit about pools. I can guarantee you I did. So during the process of it, which then helps with my knowledge of going forward and how I make decisions on about it from the information from all the research that we did around the state with different pools from that perspective.
And Carl and then Laurie?
Yeah, a few things. First off, I wasn't volunteering to be on that committee. But the reason why is because I know there's probably seven people on this council, whether you want to talk about it today or in a month and a half, that would want to be on that committee. This is a really important piece of what Sandy's about. I just think there's a lot of energy around this one. Like I said, I still get phone calls and emails from people who want to know what's going on with the pool. And I really feel that's a, a big piece of what Sandy could be and needs to be. I just think that, you know, my opinion is, is that the pool's got to be put into place. The other thought was that we put this community together, not only do we need to get the right people in terms of the community, but we need to get some right people in terms of professionals to make sure we have some, maybe engineering side of this, maybe the cost side of this, somebody that really knows some of the realities of what cost to put a pool together and, and the community center together. And I, I am one of the ones that raised my hand and say, I did not like Opsys's plan. I thought they were misunderstood some of the prices. They presented several things that I was not in favor of and they ignored several of my statements about what I thought should be put into it. And I kind of resisted the whole plan itself. But I think that getting some of the right people into this plan, this committee is really crucial. So I advocate spending some energy and making sure we get the right folks. Somewhat similar to what we did with the econ committee. I think that was well thought out and I think that we did the same way here.
Yeah, and don't forget, a lot of us watched Opsys turn around and basically copy and paste that plan into a plan for Camus as well. Very similar price and it went down, you know, like twenty-two percent of the amount, like unbelievable. Laurie?
Yeah, I just, I'm definitely in favor of putting a community group together with the caveat, though, that I want, I would like some timelines put in, in place with this, because we're sitting here wasting taxpayer dollars on a building that is sitting vacant and that annoys me to no end. So, so I would like some timelines put as far as like maybe dealing with what we're going to do with this existing building first. Because again, that's a huge waste of taxpayers' dollars to just have that building sitting there. And so, you know, what I don't want is we've been dealing with this for two years and I don't want to continue to kick this can down the road. I want some forward progress, one way or the other. So that, that would be my number one goal out of a committee like that.
Absolutely. Jan?
Yeah, maybe Bethany will remember this gentleman's name, but there was a guy who actually, yeah, he lives in our community now, but he helped resurrect the Madras project with the pool. Would love to see him involved.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good suggestion. All right. All right. Well, awesome. Good productive meeting. It's great seeing some of the new faces mixed with some of the ones that I know we're going to dearly miss here as well. So with that, why don't we go ahead and take a fifteen-minute recess and we'll come back for a regular meeting at seven o'clock? Thank you. I'll do the gavel. There we go. All right, so let's go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One day, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So with that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete's here. Counselor Smallwood?
Here.
Counselor Hamblin?
Present.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Exner?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah.
Mayor Pulliam?
Here. Well, welcome everyone to this evening's city council meeting. Quick review of tonight's agenda is we will have, will look for any changes to the agenda. Then we'll have public comment. Then we'll go to our consent agenda, which has our meeting minutes from our November sixteenth and November thirtieth meetings. And then we'll have the second reading of our Bull Run Terrace Proposal under resolutions. We'll have a discussion and possible approval for master fee schedule update. And then we have planning commission appointments. We'll then have a report from the city manager, followed by committee and council reports, and then a reminder to council that we do have an executive session at the end of this evening's meeting. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seen and none, we will go to public comment. Please, just a reminder is that the public record has been closed on the Bull Run Terrace Development Proposal. We will have a second reading tonight that council will have a discussion and vote on, but we will not be taking any more public comment. All other public comment is welcome at this time. Please feel free to participate by the clicking the raise hand button or dialing star nine. If you're participating via telephone, you will have three minutes. And please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list of attendees. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. So with that, we will then go to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, or a thumbs down?
Aye on the first and I'll abstain from the second meeting minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz. Appreciate that. Kerry's. With that, we will go ahead and open up discussion for ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty, ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-five, land use file nineteen dash oh five oh, Bull Run Terrace. Is there a report from Kelly O'Neil?
Yeah, I'll keep this very brief. My kids are being very loud in the background. So the only thing I wanted to tell you is I gave a one-page staff report that basically just discusses the list of attachments. So before you tonight is the ordinance with three exhibits, one being the staff report and two being maps. There's also an email from Kathleen Walker that was received at your last hearing, I believe at like seven forty-three PM. A memo from myself regarding that testimony and a calculation error that was done during the last meeting. And then the applicant's final written argument that they submitted on December fourth. If you want more information about how the final written argument works, I would ask our city attorney, Mr. Doofman, because I just have very limited knowledge on that. And I think just getting a brief synopsis from him would be a wise thing. So that's what I'd recommend going forward with.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. David? Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Um, David, we would probably like a little bit of an update on that. Also, um, if you could provide me with a little bit of order, in case we want to have a discussion, should we do that before we do the second reading or should the discussion be after the second reading? And then my final question for you will be, is there any problems with councillor Schultz participating tonight because she was not around for the first reading? Thank you.
You bet. And I got one more for you and we can do that after, uh, after I speak here. And that will be, uh, before you start discussion, which will be before you have a second reading. So you'd want to do that beforehand. Uh, I'd like you to poll for any ex parte contacts between last Monday and tonight. Technically, we, with it, with the hearing closed and, and a second reading happening tonight, um, we just want to make sure that we've disclosed any that might have happened. So we can take care of that after I'm done with, uh, answering your questions. Um, as far as, um, the, uh, uh, right to argument, uh, well, basically in the long and the short of it is that we didn't, uh, the applicant did not realize, I didn't realize it came in late, uh, the testimony, um, that came in from, uh, Ms. Walker. Uh, it was before the hearing had officially been closed. And, uh, I could go into a, a very deep rabbit hole about how, uh, Luba and the courts have looked at those sorts of issues in the past. Suffice it to say that it's, it's probably testimony that is in the record, uh, but it wasn't something that the applicant, uh, ever saw. And the applicant does have the burdens here and they, as they do in all of these quasi judicial matters to, um, show that they've met the standards and have the, uh, uh, right to respond to matters that come in. Uh, normally there's not, um, in most cases applicants don't exercise this right in the statute to submit final arguments. Uh, it's fairly rare in my experience, but it is there, uh, and they didn't waive that. So that's how they chose to respond to the, uh, to the email that came in. So that's why you have the email, uh, that is in the record. You've got the applicant's written final argument that responds to that. You have Kelly's email, excuse me, memo that, uh, I think does a decent job trying to kind of give you guidance on, on, on some of those issues. Uh, and as Kelly said, the, the issue with respect to, to units and how that is calculated.
Um, before you go on, Dave, uh, the council didn't have a chance to look at Ms. Walker's input either. And, uh, I guess I didn't see it until the following morning, uh, and by then everybody had made decisions that that was supposed to be included. Uh, does that going to influence how we view this during the second reading?
Uh, so since it was sent directly to all of you, we assume, even though maybe some of you have read it, some of you haven't, uh, that at least, uh, it, the, obviously the possibility was that you did. Uh, the protocol is to send that to, to, uh, the, um, city recorder. Um, but you know, we're in interesting times here. So, uh, such is life. So the fact that you maybe read it afterwards, there's not much we can do about that. Um, it's, but it is in the record. So it's not as if you had an ex parte contact. We just treat it as other evidence that came in and, and that's why we're allowing for the, uh, well, the applicant requested, uh, to have its right to have final argument and why you also have that memo from, uh, from the applicant's lawyer. So there's nothing you need to do. You don't have to ignore it. Uh, if we had something that came in now, I would say that's outside the record and you can't consider it. But, uh, Ms. Walker's testimony and then the applicant's written argument is, is something that you certainly can consider, can consider. Um, and then I think the, uh, last issue, but mayor, you can tell me if there's something else that I, that I'm missing here, but was, uh, councillor, uh, Schultz? And the fact that she was not, uh, with us a week ago. And so, uh, really for her, it's just a matter of whether she's had an opportunity to, uh, you know, go through the materials, to have viewed and listened to the audio. We had a, a little bit of back and forth, uh, uh, earlier today on that point and, and I'll let councillor Schultz speak for herself. But I, she was, you know, uh, to her credit wise enough to sort of anticipate, what do we do here? Uh, and so, you know, with that, I guess, um, I, I'd ask her if she's, um, able to participate, has, has read the material, uh, or would feel better, uh, abstaining, given her absence.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I did get a chance. I, so I wanted to talk to David about it. I, um, I don't feel that I gave enough of a, uh, read through all of the documents. Um, and I skimmed the video, but I don't feel that I watched it closely enough to really, um, I don't feel comfortable partaking tonight, so I'm going to abstain from the vote tonight.
Okay. Thank you councillor. Appreciate that. Um, um, David, can she still participate if she so chooses in conversation, even if she's abstaining from the vote?
No, it shouldn't be an all or nothing thing. So, um, yeah, both discussion and, uh, the vote.
Should I leave or can I still sit here?
Uh, you, you're welcome to stay. That's, that's
We're not going to let you off the hook that easy councillor. Um, all right. So why don't we go ahead and, and David, please interrupt at any time, but I'm first I'm going to, uh, uh, well, obviously I'm just process stuff. If you think I'm saying something dumb, don't interrupt then. Um, okay. So, uh, first let's go ahead and poll the, uh, council, um, for any ex parte, uh, contacts between the last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, the, the only thing I, I will say is that there has been, uh, a continued discussion on social media, you know, that I have seen as I'm scrolling through. I did have a, uh, short back and forth on one of those pages with councillor Kathleen Walker, but it was not on the issue of Bull Run Terrace. Um, but it was on a comment thread that did deal with this application. Um, so staff can feel free if they want to include that in the public record, but it really did not pertain to this, um, to the Bull Run Terrace conversation. Any other, um, ex parte contact?
And mayor, if we, if we don't have any more, I will just ask, uh, and I can do it just to make it easier. If there are any members of the audience that would like to comment on or have any, any concerns about the, um, the disclosure you made such as it is.
Okay. Jeff.
And so to do so, people can click the raise hand button at the bottom of their screens or dial star nine if they're on the phone. Uh, but mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open up for any discussion that any councillors would like to have, um, uh, before we call the second reading. Obviously there was a staff report, um, that came forward on, uh, the units and some of those things from Mr. O'Neill. Uh, was there any discussion or questions from council before we proceed with the second reading? Uh, councillor Exner.
Yeah, I just, uh, probably from Kelly, how accurate is the new numbers? I know, I, I thought the first numbers like was four, fourteen additional was, uh, something that they just, uh, did as a matter of calculation at the time. And your letter that came in a, a day or so later, uh, how accurate do you feel those new numbers are?
Yeah, four, fourteen is definitely not accurate. Um, the, as I explained in the memo, the calculation was done on net acreage instead of gross acreage. The problem with our density calculations, they're very well done. Like that section of the code is written very well. That's, that's a section I would not anticipate changing. But what I will say is that unless we have a plat map in front of us that actually shows the areas that will be dedicated to the public, it is virtually impossible for me to do a density calculation because I have no idea, um, the difference between the gross and the net, because I don't know how much area would be taken out for right of way stormwater facilities and that sort of thing. And if the existing zoning was to remain, the development would be much different from what you're seeing before you tonight. As far as what roads would be laid out, where the stormwater facilities would be. And there's a good chance in a clear and objective, um, path land use proposal that they wouldn't even propose parkland. So it's, it's very hard for me to determine exactly, but I do believe it's somewhere between thirty-five and forty. If you don't include the C three land, um, as I explained in the memo, the C three land really brings you down a rabbit hole. Um, there's nothing even in the code to determine how you do a density calculation on it. Um, if I was to do the C three land, I'd have to take out all the area for the tree retention, because that's where they put it all in, on that piece of property. And then after doing that, I would have to make some big assumptions about whether there's dedication of land and how much of it will be commercial. So instead of making all those random assumptions, I think it's much safer just to say we don't know at this time. Um, the trip cap will help with the C three land. I can tell you that. I think it's somewhere between thirty-five and forty. I, I did the calculation a few different ways and I came up with thirty-six one way, thirty-nine one way, thirty-seven one way. So I think it's between thirty-five and forty.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Uh, any further discussion or questions? One, one thing I just would like to state is that, uh, you know, my position, um, has not, um, changed. I have the same concerns, uh, even more so, um, after the updated, um, report. Uh, mainly with the community engagement and visioning, um, for just projects like these, specifically this one. I have concerns about twenty-six and, uh, and debacle and, um, and the traffic concerns, uh, that that creates. Um, with people using it basically as a bypass of highway twenty-six during, um, you know, important times of traffic patterns. I have wastewater concerns, um, about, um, you know, additional, um, just where we sit with that project. Um, and while we manage the growth, um, of this community. Uh, with saying all of that, uh, I, I do want to kind of tip my hat to councillors that may feel, um, otherwise. Um, I understand that this project does, uh, meet several goals that previous councils, including this council have had for many years. Um, there is, and just the development of that property, uh, debacle connecting to twenty-six is a long-term, uh, goal of, uh, this community. Improvements to that intersection's importance, important for transit, pedestrian sidewalk connections, all kinds of things that this development would bring. It's also important to point out that a lot of folks like to talk about development pain for itself. Uh, uh, there, that is all things that, uh, that this development would add, you know, infrastructure, uh, to this, uh, community. So I do, I do understand, um, all of that, but this is at our discretion. Um, I do believe that we need to be, get more to the forty thousand foot levels of council instead of having, uh, developers, the ability in the, and I guess the last meeting, they have the right and the ability to do so as well within their right. And I would be doing the same thing. But we also as a community have the right and ability to engage with our citizens and, uh, on really a visioning of what we want the future of this community to look like. And I'm excited to do that here, uh, uh, over the next year. Uh, but so those are just my thoughts as we go into this vote that I wanted to articulate. Uh, councillor Exner.
Yeah, I, I don't want to belabor the matter so much, but for me, the reason why I did vote for the previous reading was because the significance of increases was, I thought insignificant. And, uh, when I heard the analysis from Kelly that it's double plus of what the, um, original conversations was about, the increase, that troubles me quite a bit. And so, uh, I just don't feel very comfortable about having that kind of, uh, increase, uh, with the kind of current status that we have with the way the city is positioned at this point, either with our wastewater and we've talked infinitum about the transportation issues and so on. So just wanted to let you know, I'm very concerned about the additional increase that this is going to become a burden on our facilities.
Thank you councillor. Um, with that, is there somebody, uh, who would like to call for a second reading?
I'll call for a second reading.
Thank you councillor Smallwood.
This is ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-five. An ordinance approving a zone map amendment, comprehensive plan map amendment, a specific area plan and a tentative subdivision plan and imposing conditions of approval.
I now believe that I need a motion to adopt the second reading. And a second to that.
A second.
Well, I'm not making the motion. I, I, I'm leaving the meeting. Sorry. I need a
I'll make a motion that we adopt the second reading.
And councillor Lee, would you like to second that?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion by councillor Smallwood to accept the second reading and a second by councillor Lee. Uh, Jeff, will you please proceed with the roll call vote?
Councillor Pete's.
Yes.
Councillor Smallwood.
No.
Councillor Hamblin.
Yes.
Councillor Lee.
Yes.
Councillor Exner.
No.
Councillor Schultz abstained. Mayor Pulliam.
No.
Mayor, that's three yeses and three nos. So I'd look to the city attorney.
So, uh, you, you know, it, it, it's sort of a, I guess, um, the default and what you'd expect, you know, Robert's rule of order, you need to have a majority, uh, in order for the council to, to take any official action. Uh, with a three to three, you don't have that majority. Uh, it's a deadlock. Uh, so, um, uh, really, I guess I sort of look at this in two ways. One would be, you know, is there any discussion the council wants to have about something, uh, and this is just really kind of theoretical, uh, that would be potentially changed, uh, in the, the proposal, the conditions, et cetera, uh, that would change somebody's vote one way or the other. Um, that's something we could talk about. Uh, beyond that, if it stays at three of three, uh, and councillor, uh, Schultz obviously has said that she's abstained, uh, for the reasons she mentioned. Then, um, I think it's effectively a denial of the application. And what we would do is at this point, uh, go ahead, I'd work with Kelly. Uh, and we would, instead of having an ordinance that would be adopted, the, uh, the council ultimately would adopt, uh, an order with findings that would deny the application. So I think those are, uh, it's unusual, but I think those are the, those are the two routes here, given the second, uh, reading is tied.
Thank you councillor Exner.
Uh, I just noticed that the, uh, proponent is not here tonight and it all that was something that might make a difference if he would be able to make some sort of comment.
No, because the, the hearing, the hearing is closed at this point, right? And, um, that, that introduces a whole another set of issues if we were to open that for, um, anybody, including the applicant at this point. So.
Uh, so with that, is there any discussion from councillors? Is there any councillors that, um, are open to changing their mind on this issue?
No, I'll have to say, oh, I, can I go?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, councillor Pete's sold. Then we'll go councillor Smallwood.
You know, um, as I stated before, you know, um, I'm probably the first one that, you know, is affected by it, you know, would say no to this as I live on that road, uh, down the street from it, never was noticed, uh, by anything, because I've lived farther away from development. But I just go back to, you know, where, where it was, uh, sixteen years ago or fifteen years ago that it was first done there. Um, I've gone back and forth with it, um, honestly. Um, and, um, I was a little disheartened with the numbers that came in that were, uh, definitely different, um, not by a few. Um, so in hearing that from the last, um, meeting and, and discussing it, or not discussing, but thinking about it, processing it, um, you know, is it come back to, um, you know, some of the things that, you know, what is, you know, best for the, the community in a whole. And so I've gone back and forth with it. We know if we leave it the same, it doesn't mean that the development is dead or it's not tonight. It's already been, um, approved for the zoning and it's changing the zoning aspect of things. It's not, we don't even have a development in there. Um, or, you know, laid out with, um, exactly where everything's going to be. Um, in that aspect of things, as Kelly pointed out, going to tell you from the net acreage versus the gross acres and that. And that was one of the big issues for that. But given that, um, um, piece of it, uh, and that, um, the traffic is, you know, it's, it's a big number. It's not just a small number. And so, but at the end of the day of it, the reasoning behind why learning that information is, is continuing to vote for that, uh, lessened in the ability to say this is still good for the community in that aspect, um, was the things that we got out of it that has been the goals for the community for, you know, um, twenty years, you know, that debacle extension through, um, I agree that this is not a bypass by any means. Um, not, it's not what that was for. It was for emergency, getting it through traffic, um, aspect of that, um, piece of it. Um, but on the merits of just the change that it has, I mean, I could be persuaded to change my vote in that aspect of it. But also, you know, want to throw out there that some of the benefits that we've been you know, want to throw out there that some of the benefits that we've been seeking for a long time were those parks. You know, that, you know, we heard, I've heard for fifteen years about the Deer Point before any houses were built about having that park finished. And that was all based off of, um, like, when we heard of the Parks Board and everything else when I was on that was to get that thing, uh, connected together as the two developments input in place. Uh, the other was getting the road constructed, um, to go through, uh, for that connectivity piece of it. So those are, you know, very strong points that our community has been seeking for a very, very long term. Um, and the significance around changing the zoning of it, you know, at fourteen dwelling units is a lot different than saying, changing it for thirty-five to forty dwelling units, if that makes any sense.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate those remarks. Um, councillor Smallwood.
Yeah, and just, just to be quick for me, uh, that was the deal breaker for me, just the difference in the, in the high-density units, uh, knowing what those traffic patterns look like and, uh, thinking about all that traffic entering Highway twenty-six or coming onto Debarco. And then factoring that in with, uh, the way, uh, that, that we have, uh, poor zoning for, uh, for the size and width of our streets and the street parking that will ensue there. And, and for me, that was, that was the main reason for, uh, for the change in my vote from last week.
Councillor Exner.
And real shortly, um, I'm not voting against the developer, uh, and the fact that we have potential putting a development in there with all the current standards and stuff. I'm just voting for against, excuse me, for, against the zoning change. And so I fully encourage the developer, at least if it does get failed, to go forward, but, uh, not at the increases. And as I am with councillor Smallwood, the numbers of increase, uh, very much affected me.
I agree with, I agree with all those sentiments. Councillor Exner.
And I'd like to add that regardless of which development, the connection to Highway twenty-six would still be the, that same one, right? So in reality, what changes in this would be the zoning of the property and the density that was laid onto it. One of the things that was brought up before too was that the state is changing, um, some of our zoning to where we were going to have to put on more density into that area, but that's yet to come as well in the, um, aspects of things, because, um, yeah, that has, it hasn't come yet, but also the proposal for the development hasn't come either. So as far as, um, where everything would be laid out, so. Unless they went with the exact same proposal that was, um, given fourteen, fifteen years ago.
Um, well, with everyone's remarks, um, uh, councillor Peetzel, would you suggest that we do another vote?
I'd like to hear, uh, before that, uh, councillor Lee or councillor, councillor Hamblin on their thoughts, because I'd like to hear their thoughts.
Thank you. Are there thoughts councillor Lee and councillor Hamblin?
Yes, um, I still like the idea of having some affordable housing, more affordable housing than what our single units are now selling for in town. Um, I think the numbers are kind of squishy because we really don't know what the final project is going to look like. If the project could be reconfigured to some degree and come back before the council again, there may be some benefit. But I don't think that the House Bill two thousand and three implications that will be dealt with in the comp plan are going to make things better. I think that they're going to require a lot of infill. And so one thing we need to really think about is what the future is going to look like, because there will be requirements, the U G B won't be able to really be moved out to a great deal, because House Bill two oh three is all about infill and affordable housing. So if we're not going to have developments like this, we really need to find some other approach for affordable housing, which is something I've been wanting to have us do for quite some time.
Thank you, councillor. Appreciate those remarks.
Councillor.
I don't have anything substantial to add. I echo what, uh, Jan said already and what Jeremy has said as well. Thank you. And with that, uh, why don't we go ahead and do another, uh, well, councillor Exner, do?
I'm going to, um, uh, I guess it's request a second.
Come out. Yeah. So Jeff, why don't we go ahead and go through and do another roll call vote, please?
Do we have to do, oh, just that, we have already done the first reading, second reading, calling. It's just a, a second vote on the process.
Need to, yeah, about David?
You'd want to have a motion, uh, uh, someone would make a motion, you know, for, uh, another, uh, another vote on the second reading. It could be either way, right? It could be to, uh, presumably to approve, uh, the second reading. That would be the motion.
Just so you know, by next year, I'll have this down. All right. Uh, is.
You're doing fine.
Is there a motion and then a second?
I move that we, uh, vote a second time to approve.
Is there a second?
Well, what, or I don't want to make a difference.
It, it to adopt the second reading. It's fine. Yeah, it really doesn't make a difference.
Okay, second. Hey, there's a motion to adopt the second reading by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Hamblin. Jeff, will you proceed with a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Peetzel.
Because of the change in the numbers from fourteen to thirty-five to forty, um, I will vote no on the zoning change, leaving in place the current zoning that was in effect prior to this discussion.
Okay, councillor Smallwood?
No.
Councillor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councillor Lee?
Yes.
Councillor Exner?
No.
That was a no, correct?
No.
And Mayor Pulliam?
No.
Okay, motion, um, fails.
Okay, so, uh, you know, at this point, you do have a majority, uh, four to two, as I counted it here, uh, uh, that, uh, rejected the second reading. Uh, ordinance is not adopted. Uh, so at this point then, uh, Kelly and I can work on, um, Kelly might have a question.
Yeah, Kelly.
Uh, go ahead and finish, David. I, there's a point of order that I want to raise before we move on to the next agenda, uh, item on the, uh, meeting.
Sure. Uh, so I think, like I said, it's going to be a matter of, uh, putting together an order with findings, uh, and it, and what I heard from the discussion really is about, again, uh, that really the, you know, the main standard here is, is that there are public needs, um, uh, that exist. Uh, and what's been proposed to be the best way that the council feels will be the best way of meeting those. And at this point, for the reasons that were stated, um, it sounds like, uh, a majority of council ultimately does not feel that way. Uh, so we'll put together an order to that effect, and then that would be something that, um, like we do with other, uh, you know, orders, uh, the mayor would, would sign. Do you want to, I guess one question I'd have is, uh, since this is a little bit, uh, you know, different, we had a, a first reading, a second reading that was different than the first. Do you want us to come back with, uh, the findings? It wouldn't be a hearing. It's just for the council's benefit to look at those. Uh, or do you want to, you know, as you traditionally would do, just sort of delegate that, um, role of, of adopting the order to, uh, to the mayor? That's really it. The council's call.
When would those come back? At the next meeting?
That, that was going to be my point of order is that if there, it's going to be under the current council, they only have like one meeting left as far as I'm aware, one nor, one regular meeting. Um, I don't even know with our current workload of, I'll be able to modify that order by the twenty-first. Um, so if it comes back for another reading, it might be difficult to achieve that timeline. Or not another reading, but a, another meeting, if it's just going to be signed, uh, by Mayor Pulliam, I think it'd be much easier. And then my, my point of order was, does it need to happen with this council still in place, or could it happen after that?
To your second, so to the first point, again, I think that's really the council's call, and you certainly, you know, make, that makes some sense in terms of just the mechanics and the, um, you know, getting people together. Uh, but again, that's, council wants to have it back. We'll, we'll make it work. Um, the, the findings and the order that is, that to the second question, uh, it really should be this council, yes, because you're going to have been new folks that will have to come on and will basically be in the position that, uh, councillor Schultz was in, uh, tonight. Um, um, it gets, it gets pretty, pretty, uh, difficult at that point, a lot more procedurally difficult.
And has to be a motion, but, um, I, I would certainly be okay with delegating it to the mayor's responsibility.
But what I heard from David was it would still have to happen before the end of the year.
It, yeah, and we, I mean, I, I don't mean to put Kelly on the spot here, but I think, um, you know, from my perspective, he and I can work together to, to, uh, make sure that, that that happens. I don't see that as being an enormous lift. Um, but yes, it should be done, you know, while, um, before the end of the year, basically.
Well, I'll second that motion, not that I don't think we needed to motion it, but that, um, that we delegate the mayor, who normally, we've never really had these findings come back for the whole council to see anyways. It just gets delegated to the mayor to sign, because we've all agreed and to, to those findings. So, or the, to the outcome of the, of the, uh, situation. So that would be my second, if we had a motion in a second.
I don't think we have to vote, though.
We don't, but I guess what's the rest of the council for the sake that giving, so Stan doesn't have to say, please give it to me to sign. I'll say, is anybody else want to do anything?
Does anybody have a problem with this? Okay. All right, cool.
Okay, that's the way we'll proceed.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate everybody. Um, all right. So moving on on our agenda, let's go to the master fee schedule updates. Um, Tyler, I see that you unmuted. Must be you, buddy.
That's me. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I'll be brief since we, uh, very recently spoke about many of these things at the November sixteenth work session. Um, but you previously, council has expressed a desire to bring incremental changes before you, instead of large increases after a number of years. So that's what staff has been working towards. Um, you'll see in the, uh, second exhibit, exhibit B of the staff report, there's a detailed listing of all of our current fees and charges with the proposed increase, um, in the column next to it in red text. I'll just briefly summarize those, uh, changes. There's some minor changes to business license, uh, late fees, maps and comp plans, uh, copies, as well as record request fees that will be effective January first of twenty twenty-one. Uh, two percent increase across the board to all planning fees effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Um, addition of library of things fees for late charges effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, thirteen percent increase to both the water and sewer rates effective with the January billing. Uh, I'm happy to discuss or answer any questions related to that, but I think we've, uh, talked pretty, um, at length about the reason for those, uh, utility rate increases and the capital improvement projects that are associated with those. And then lastly, um, water and transportation S D Cs increasing six point one percent effective February first, twenty twenty-one. And sewer S D Cs, um, increasing by five point five percent, also effective February first, twenty twenty-one. Um, all of these increases are either tied to C P I or the, um, construction, uh, cost index, um, for the Seattle region that we've historically used for those S D Cs. So there's no significant changes in any methodology for these, uh, proposed increases.
Thank you. Tyler, is there any questions for staff? Councillor Exner?
Yeah, um, since a major portion of this decision was based on the fact that we needed to have the money on time and available for, um, our funding for this one is waiting until February, going to be appropriate with that timing.
It should be just fine. Um, you know, logistically, we need about thirty days from the adoption of the S D C increase. I assume you're talking about sewer S D Cs, councillor Exner, is that correct? Yeah, uh, logistically speaking, we need about thirty days from the time those S D Cs are adopted for us to implement that change within our, um, development software. We go through the state of Oregon for their e permitting. Um, uh, you know, building permit software, and it takes, you know, anywhere from three to four weeks for their staff to update those changes. So, um, you know, we, we could have an earlier date, you know, maybe a mid-January date if that was a more desirable action. I don't think two weeks will make a significant change if we did, you know, January fifteenth versus February first for those. Um, the other component, and this is more of a courtesy than anything else, and I acknowledge that the last time we had a significant S D C rate increase, which is why we wanted to give developers a little bit more time to adjust to that, but, um, you know, just from a courtesy standpoint, an extra, you know, two weeks or so for developers to know what's coming down the pipe is not, um, uh, you know, problematic on our end at this point in time.
Yeah, my intent was not to make it earlier. I was even pushing it out even farther, because I, it is, you know, that we do have a lot taxes being paid. I just wrote a tax check and, uh, at the end of every year, there's always a lot of fees that happen. So I would not be in favor of doing it any earlier than February. Um, that's what, kind of the reason why I, I checked it out here was if March was even, uh, okay, I was thinking about pushing it that far, but certainly not earlier.
The short answer from my perspective is, uh, you know, the, the five point five percent increase is not huge. So, you know, we're still going to be getting, um, the, the significant increase that we saw previously will still have that being applied, you know, to any S D Cs for sewer purposes. So, um, obviously it helps our picture if we have more revenue earlier, but that's never, um, a bad thing for us to be in. But I don't think that if we delayed this to March first, you would see a significant impact. No.
Okay, councillor Peetzel.
I just want to thank staff, um, as I did before, um, at, um, the last meeting for bringing this to us during our, um, work session. You know, it's been one of our goals that we've had for more than ten years to fix, um, our issue with, um, not raising anything and then trying to do these balloon increases every twenty years that then really isn't palatable. Uh, so having these small little incremental increases to keep up with inflation and those type of things, um, is a lot more palpable than some of the other ones that we've had to endure on council, trying to get up to speed on some of these others. So, um, I just want to thank you for going through that process, like I did said last time, and, um, doing exactly what we've asked you to do. So, thank you.
Um, only thing for me would be to just please make sure that we're sharing this, especially with our commercial users as well, so that they can plan, you know, economically around, you know, that they pass a lot of this on to their customers and they lock in these rates, you know, on an annual basis, a lot of them. So just so that they can, you know, predictively predict what their expenses are going to be to make sure that we get these in front of our commercial, um, our commercial customers.
Uh, I will add that I know, um, our utility clerk, as well as the public works director, were working last week on compiling a list of the top hundred customers to get a, a special notice out to them as far as what the rates are going to be looking like. Um, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, it was only the top fifty last year at this time. Um, and so we've expanded that to the top hundred to ensure we're reaching, you know, a larger group and, and giving them adequate notice. Um, so I think we've done, you know, a, a better job this go around of communicating that to some of our larger customers.
Right.
The only other item I would add, which is not being discussed or, or voted on tonight, is some minor changes in the building fees. Um, we do have to notice the state building division forty-five days before we have an actual, um, motion to adopt those rate increases or, or charges rather. So that will be coming back at a future council meeting. Um, we touched on why we're increasing those at the work session, but I'll recap that, um, in a couple of weeks when we meet to actually vote on that item.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there a motion or councillor?
Mayor, uh, just, sorry, one, one quick thing with fee increases, uh, I would just ask that you, um, take any, uh, ask for any public testimony that may be there. Um, and so, uh, just briefly see if anybody wants to say anything.
What? I, I mean, if we do that, we do, I'm sorry, but we do public comment one meeting unless we're in a judicial setting. Why would we take? The, this has been on the agenda. If people want to talk, there, there's a public comment portion at every single meeting. Why would we go out of our normal operation?
It, it with any, under the way the courts have looked at it with fee increases, uh, it's technically something that should be a hearing. We've done this a couple of times in the past, so it doesn't require any, nothing like a land use matter, but, uh, just allowing for anybody to, uh, have a comment is typically how you handle it.
All right. I, I would just, I'd point to staff that in the future, we need to be prepared for this kind of stuff, because I'd also, if we're going to go for public testimony, you know, we got to do a really good job too of engaging the public so that they know that there's an opportunity to speak on this issue. Um, all right.
You know, my apologies for that. I should have run that by staff beforehand.
Yeah, thank you. Um, all right, Jeff, why don't you take us through it?
Okay, if, uh, anyone would like to speak, you can click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're joining on the phone, dial star nine. And we'll just wait a moment or two and see if anyone raises their hand. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
You know, I'm just trying to figure out how comfortable I am now doing this at this meeting. I'm a little agitated. You know, if if there is a, you know, this goes to process. And if there is a process that as a council, we're supposed to be engaging in with the public, you know, we really, we rely on all of you to tell us that and to help us engage in a proper process so that we can rely on public testimony and stuff for that. You know, looking up the city of Sandy website and Facebook pages, I'm curious now if we've had any kind of push out for public comment on this. I just, I was unaware of this process. And so, Jordan, I guess I'm looking for you. Is this something that we should push to the next meeting or something? I'm frustrated.
You certainly can. December 21st would be the next council meeting. We could do push more for, you know, getting a public comment on it and and see if we get a response on that. You know, my apologies too for for not including on the agenda an opportunity for public comment on that. Completely escaped me, so I will take credit for and blame for that, for not including on the agenda. It is important. David's right. Fee increases shouldn't, the public should have an opportunity to comment on this. I think with with so much that has been going on with the rates and wastewater, with the study session and everything, I think we sort of just glossed over that. But it's certainly up to you, Mayor, for setting the agenda if you'd like to see if the council would like to move this to the 21st. And then we can push the word out to have a chance to do the public comment period on the 21st to get input on the rates. We could share the link to the the work session so they can get the background, especially on, you know, the major ones like the wastewater and water raids.
I support that 100%. I think I think we should definitely do that.
Councilor Pete Sol, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, but, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, like you stated at the beginning, Stan, we did have a call out to anything that's on the agenda. So there was that, but we also had the work session on this prior, because I know and talked about that as well. So not that it hadn't been there, but I'm good either way. So but back to your point at the beginning is we already had a call out while more people were on there to talk about anything that was on the agenda if they wanted to call that out, but that was, I'm fine with it either way.
I'll just say, there's nothing that the city's done in terms of the noticing, in terms of how you proceeded with it, that that gives me any pause for you to adopt it tonight. It's one of these things where where, you know, in the past, when they, when the, when they talk about having a fee increase and having a quote unquote hearing, you often just have that associated with the agenda item. All it means is just the opportunity to comment. And so you probably have done that with the fact that you, you know, at the beginning of the meeting say, anything that, you know, is not titled as such, people can comment on. Certainly, the notice the city gives in terms of the things that are on its agenda is is totally sufficient. It's a, it's a lawyer's belt and suspenders thing in terms of just calling for testimony when it comes to these types of fee increases. I don't have any reservation about how you've gone about this.
Councilor Exner.
Yeah, I'm especially sensitive about the fee increases, particularly in the stormwater, not stormwater, but the sewer water fees. I think it would be real appropriate to give the public a chance to reply and and interact. And quite frankly, I was going to make a motion that was amended to doing it in March for the fee increases, but I certainly would support doing something at the next one, not tonight.
Councilor Lee.
Maybe we should hold it over to January to give the new counselors a chance to to pass a fee in the new year.
Well, I can certainly, I certainly can understand that sentiment. I do believe with the homework that this council has done and the understanding that we have the current situation that we have, I do believe it is a bit of a leadership moment for this council to do take this on ourselves. I I say that as an individual who will be who will be part of that voting, you know, group, no matter what. I just, I feel a lot more comfortable with the education level of this, of this, not educate, how much we're up to speed on this issue with all the work that's been done over the last two years. Let's go ahead and carry it over to the next, to the next meeting.
I'll see you then.
All right, thank you, Tyler, appreciate it. All right, let's go on to new business planning commission appointments.
Kelly, are you available to say a few words about the planning commission appointments?
I wasn't planning on it, but I could if you want me to. Yeah, so unfortunately, we have two planning commissioners that won't be renewing. What would you call it there? Or won't be seeking reappointment, Mr. Mobley and Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan's been with the city of Sandy on the planning commission for about six years and Mr. Mobley for about three years. So that leaves two open seats. We have a third seat that was also open. But Commissioner Maiteon has reapplied for reappointment for that seat. I think he's been on the commission for about a year and a half now. Last Thursday night, we had a planning commission applicant review committee, which consisted of Mayor Poliam, Counselor President Pete Old, Counselor Lee, Commissioner Chair Crosby, and then I just kind of listened in. I was not a voting member of that appointee committee. And they they listened to three very good candidates, and I think before you tonight, they have just, they have recommended to reappoint Commissioner Maiteon for another term, and they are also recommending appointment of Mr. Stephen Hook, who is on the line as well tonight. So the other seat for now, I don't believe they're recommending an appointment to the other seat. But in the near future, we'll probably be opening it again for more applicants. I think with that, that's pretty much my summary on the subject.
And as as Kelly indicated, Commissioner Maiteon and Mr. Hook are available in case you might find it useful to hear from them or or they're they're here, just to let you know.
Just as someone who was on the committee, I just would say that I thought we had three great applicants. And I really think we have two that we recommended that all of us were very unanimous behind as council liaisons, as well as our representative from the planning commission. And then I would just want to say thank you for your service to our community for the two outgoing commissioners. I think we've all sat through these planning discussions. Some of us roll our eyes when we have one of them on the agenda, that's all they do. And just very much appreciate everything they've done for our communities, certainly not an easy job. Any other, Councilor Lee?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that Mr. Hook, who's joining the commission, had been on the planning commission, I believe it was in Troutdale. So he comes with some strong experience, very pleased with the candidates.
I think it was fair of you, but yes, same area.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I echo Council Lee's statement, really excited. And, you know, what Commissioner Maiteon has gained in the last year and a half or so that he's been on, as well as the experience coming in with Stephen Hook, very impressed, so.
Councilor Exner.
I move that the council points Stephen Hook and Christopher Maiteon to planning commission seats five and six.
See, a motion by Councilor Exner, a second by Counselor Hamlin. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, nay, or thumbs down. And it carries, okay. So now we're to the report from the city manager, Jordan.
All right, thanks. So there's a free, if you've seen the information from the school district about this, a free flu shot clinic at Sandy High School, December 9th and 12th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. They also will have COVID testing by appointment. And I think the information out there on Facebook and that the school district has sent out has a link to how to do that. I think there'll be reports on these from the counselors, the small business grants, 29 businesses will be awarded that were selected by the committee. Those checks will go out this week. We're happy to share that list with the council. I think only eight were repeats from the the first round. I think we'll get a report on the tree lighting, our first virtual tree lighting. You know, I think went pretty well considering first time trying to do this virtually and and using that technology. But you can watch it on YouTube anytime, and I think the mayor did a great job. I was going to mention that letters did go out to those businesses, those high utility customers about the upcoming rate increases. We wanted to make sure to get that information out. On 362nd, an update quickly on that, letters went out to the property owners about the alignment alternatives and pricing and continue that dialogue with them for this project. And that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Jordan, appreciate that. All right, we'll move forward to committee and council reports, Councilor Schultz.
No big reports tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and staff for the tree lighting. My children were just thrilled. They didn't think they'd even get to talk to Santa this year, and he was even there. So I was really impressed with that whole evening. So just shout out and thank you for for putting that on. I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilor, appreciate that. And Councilor Exner.
Nothing really huge tonight. I just, I did not participate in the tree lighting, but I drove through. And I have to say, that was kind of fun, that I had a chance to be given some cards to be able to make, and I actually think I'll be mailed or gave them back today, I think my wife did, so I think mailed, I think we just give them back. So appreciate all those folks who had drove through and and took on some of these holiday cards and celebrations, appreciate that. And thanks for doing a virtual lighting. For those of us, myself included, who are trying to be careful about the COVID, it was appreciated. Let's see, the other thing that I was going to comment on was is I did participate in selection of business, small businesses, and they're giving them some economic stimulus money from the CARE Act. I appreciate that. I've already got a couple of phone calls from folks who had listened to some of the things that were going on, and I actually had a conversation with one of them, and they're pretty happy about it. I think that we're doing the right thing in this kind of arena, helping our small businesses moving forward and helping them to, you know, pay the things that are just barely keeping them from going under, or hopefully this will help out. And then lastly, I'm really looking forward to getting the Art Commission back up and running, and I know that we've decided to hold for a while. Planning commissioners adopted and put into the system. I really look forward to getting the same thing for our Art Commission, so, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Lee.
Yes, I also participated in the business grants. It was great that we could provide those, particularly this time of the year. For those who may not have seen the county announcement, the county has set up five different business service centers for small businesses. And one of those is in Sandy. It will be managed by Chris from the Chamber of Commerce. I also have been working with our resilience committee of eight people, and we have developed our final draft and proposed next steps to send on to Jordan so that hopefully it can be reviewed at the next meeting. And then the only other thing I have to say is that I was appointed by the Department of Environmental Quality to be on a new rules advisory committee. It's called Cap and Reduce, instead of Cap and Trade. It has no new legislative authorities, it's just working with agencies to cut greenhouse gases.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor. Jordan, let's please do try to see if we can find time to get that on our next agenda on the resilience committee. And and Councilor Lee, thank you for your continued service, both to our community and to our state. We're much better for it. Thank you so much. Council, I'm now, I'm going around, Counselor Hamlin, you're up next.
No, I'm going to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Smallwood.
Yeah. Jordan, a question for you and maybe Chief Roberts also for you. What kind of teeth do we have as a city with some of our homeless individuals being along trails and buildings and places that people congregate outside coffee houses? So specifically, I saw ODOT, it looked like they were breaking up the camp that was along Highway 26 there north of industrial this morning. Yesterday afternoon, I counted nine grocery carts along the trail going into the trees there. I hear, but I haven't, I have, didn't have an opportunity to go check out today that behind the movie theater looks like a dump. And and then we have an individual who's a public safety hazard who has taken up camp on the southeast side of Ruben Lane on the hillside, that also he has an exorbitant amount of trash sitting there. So what what kind of process do we have in in dealing with some of this?
Yeah, we had that work session, boy, was that like a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half. But yeah, you've sort of talked about some of these problems and the things that they were doing and trying to, you know, get individuals' resources and some of the constraints too, in terms of noticing, you know, and the difference between ODOT property and city property and what we do in terms of posting and noticing and how much time. So, I mean, I think the answer is not an easy answer, and there is still some rules around what we can can do in the immediate term. But I think, you know, I think the chief can can probably add to it. But, I mean, it's something that we're very aware of, you know, that we do talk about. And we, you know, like, we, when we had that work session, we understand, you know, the council's interest in staying on top of this issue. But like I said, there's not a, there's no easy solution, especially in terms of like, when you talk about individuals in front of, you know, or going into businesses and things like that unless they're, you know, need to be trespassed or something like that. The camps are in the trash or need a problem, you know, and notifying the city, notifying us, you know, letting us know about that is is where we start, so we can address that and get folks the resources and get those things cleaned up. But it's, you know, we need, we need help in, you know, I think our cops do a good job of trying to recognize that those places and fire them too, but.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just, I'm definitely have seen and I and I recognize, you know, we're in extreme conditions with the COVID, and I realize that people are probably getting out of Portland. And I also understand, while I'm a big, a big proponent and huge, you know, love our our mass transit, but that also makes makes it very easy for some of those individuals to to migrate out here. And I'm seeing a huge increase in transient camps in my profession, so it's definitely causing me some concern.
Yeah, the shopping carts, I mean, that's another issue that we've been struggling with because, you know, transit staff are having to to actually address that because they get, you know, the the carts ended up at at the transit stops, which is a hazard and, you know, and the stores themselves are not coming and collecting them. So it is, you know, it's creating an impact on us too. So there's different things the cities have done with that. I don't think we want more regulations on businesses. But, you know, encouraging them to collect their their property would be a start. But, yeah, it is, it does kind of push some some folks buttons about those carts. Chief, I don't know if you're you're available to chime in on things that you guys have seen out there recently too.
Yeah, Counselor Smallwood, I totally get it. I've seen the same. This problem, this issues kind of become compounded since COVID a little bit because of what we talked about before. I know I'd mentioned it as council before, is some things that were going on with in the metro area pushed a few more out this way. And we're seeing folks that that, let's say, aren't our regular folks that most of my officers know. So it's it's becoming a strain on our on our resources. The, our code enforcement guy was out today, and he generally will go out and post those. And everybody, I think all of you are aware of the the decision, certainly David would be aware of the decision from the Ninth Circuit Court some time ago, and I believe that was a case that originated in Idaho. And really had an effect on what we 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 can do about these things in simple terms. So we've been honestly struggling to stay on top of it. We were out today with some camps, the one good thing. Um, the one good thing is, uh, people are really good about letting us know where they are, and also, um. And, uh, my officers out there, when they see something, we, we generally, uh, try to take action right away, and if the folks are there. At a camp, when a, um, code enforcement goes out, that draws a, um, that draws the, uh. That creates the need for an officer to go join the code enforcement officer because of safety issues. So, uh, that will draw an officer out there too, which is additional resources when they're on patrol. So, uh, yeah, it's an issue that we've been discussing at the, at the police department as well. I wish I had a, a catch-all answer for you and a, um. And this wonderful thing that would solve all of our problems tomorrow. I really don't, it's an ongoing struggle, uh, that we're, uh, continuing to, to just deal with, so, um. You know, I, I can tell you that we're, we're doing the best that we can, and normally this time of year, um. A lot of those folks that we know, um, the numbers go down in the winter time. Uh, they, they will, um, the folks that are, um, without homes will generally know that there is, there's not much in the way of services and the, and. And the, the city of Sandy here, so they will migrate, uh, generally back to those areas where some services are provided where they can get some meals. And some shelter and some warmer clothing, um, because it's just not really, um, it's not available in our area right now, so, uh. But with everything going on, I think it's changed us a little bit, and, 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 and then what you had said too about transit, yes, it does make it easier for those folks to. Um, to, uh, get to our area, um, especially now that it's, um, it's, it doesn't cost anything for, uh, folks to ride that. So, yeah, there's all those things combined, but, yeah.
Uh, Chief, but now, while you're kind of triaging this, is there community action that can take place as far as a cleanup of the camps? Are we able to work with local citizens or volunteer groups and stuff that could come into play to help?
We've, yeah.
For my relief to your officers?
Yes, and we've done some of those, we've had some of those projects before, um, and, uh, the ant farm has helped out, uh, before, and they're always willing to help out. So, uh, we've, we're in contact with them with some other programs. And then there's been some community groups that have went out and just helped clean up things as well. Now, there's some issues when you go out and clean those, you have to have certain materials and take certain, as, uh, Counselor Smallwood would know, the. Firsthand is, uh, some of these safety issues when you're cleaning up those camps, because some of these camps have those items like, uh. Uh, use needles and, uh, things of that nature, um, human waste, that, um, it's not just something you go pick up a piece of paper trash, so. Uh, it makes it a little more difficult in that regard, too, Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
Just real quick, uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, so then coming back to you, Jordan, uh, are, is there, uh, some zoning or some. Things that we can look at and tightening this up a little bit to help, to help our officers, uh, alleviate some of the strain?
Uh, zoning, like?
Well, not zoning, but is there, are there?
Like code changes?
Thank you, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she's requesting, can, you know, can staff look around and provide us with some ops? Options of actionable solutions, I mean, this is a hard issue that communities everywhere are dealing with, and there's not very many good answers. As you see, as we drive around from community to community, but maybe a little bit more engagement on some outside of the box thinking that other communities are doing. That we can have put in front of us as a council.
Got it, yeah, I think we could do that. There's been a lot of, a lot of cities trying to tackle this with some trial and error, basically. Um, codes.
We're, we're ready for that though, right? Like, we're ready to also do some trial and error.
Yeah, my, my, my concern, Jordan, is, is that I, I've noticed a huge, a huge influx, this is, and this is, it's going to continue to grow. And that, that's my concern, and, uh, you know, it, it becomes a, a bane on, uh, public safety resources. Um, you know, we've, we've, we've dealt with, uh, trying to hire new officers and, uh, you know, public safety fee, and I, I would really like it if all their time wasn't. Being utilized, uh, in a capacity that, that doesn't allow them to do their job in other areas, so.
Um. Yeah, um, I just, just another point to add to this is, is some of the changes in the, um. In, uh, a, a lot of these folks that we contact, I said before that we, we know, and, um, uh, many of them have, um. At this time right now have other, uh, issues that they're dealing with as far as the law, such as, uh, warrants and things of that nature, which we're not able to, um. We're not able to lodge those folks on those any, uh, right now. So, uh, be, and just, this is just because of, uh, the COVID restrictions at the jail, uh, at our Clackamas County Jail right now. So a lot of these folks that we know, um, are getting issued when we contact them, paper citations to, because they. Because they may have not appeared, uh, uh, and a judge put out a warrant for, uh, for missing the, for not appearing in court, and then. We're giving them another paper citation to say, okay, basically, you didn't go to this one, but here, please go to this one, here's another citation. So, um, it, it doesn't give them a chance to get, and I'm not saying that this is a, that this is the way to solve all of our problems, this is not what I'm saying. It's just one of the options that we have to, uh, at least, um, when they, when some of these folks go to the jail, at least they get. Uh, at least they get a chance to get some services, and, uh, when, before they're released. Um, and also maybe just, um, you know, they need a meal sometimes, um, and at least they're getting some of that, but that option's kind of been off the table for now. Now, that won't be, uh, permanent, of course, once we get, um, uh, back to somewhat normal conditions, so.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
And Chief, just one quick follow-up on that case you mentioned, uh, if I may, that, that is on appeal, the Ninth Circuit case that, um. Chief Roberts mentioned, uh, is, uh, on appeal to the Supreme Court, and so, um, it is. A difficult decision to navigate, um, but I think, um. The, 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 there's some likelihood, I would say, that the Supreme Court will take a different look at that.
I'm, yeah, we're, I'm following that very closely, yeah.
Alright, thank you, um, Counselor Pete, are you, are you done, Counselor Smallwood, was that?
Yeah, sorry to monopolize so much time.
Well, you're great, important issue, um, Counselor Pete Sol.
I don't have much, um, last week was a lot of different city council type meetings, um, some of them have been named already, because we were on joint meetings. But, uh, appreciated the, you know, um, our second round of the economic relief fund that we gave businesses. Um, it's always, you know, really nice to be able to help out some struggling businesses and. And to be able to have that chance for a second time, and so, um, I was just, uh, ecstatic that. For all the ones that applied that were, that qualified to apply, we were able to give out that grant. Um, plus a little bit more, um, it, to, to spread it out there, um, so. That was, um, great job for all of you in helping that out, um, definitely going to some needy businesses right now during that time. And, and when appropriate time right now, as they're going through, uh, the second shutdown as well as a, um. Coming up to the Christmas holiday season as well for their employees, and then also on the planning commission, you know, we had. Some great interviews there and, um, excited to see people step up and volunteer, um, in our community. Um, and get engaged, um, and so that always helps our jobs out, because they become more informed in what, um, we have to deal with. Uh, when it comes to the state, um, regulations and policies and things like that, and. Around development as well as other types of committees that people volunteer for, so, um, but I don't have anything more than that.
Thank you, Counselor, a couple of things, uh, from me, so first, uh, the tree lighting celebration, just wanted to thank our staff and our community. For putting together an excellent tree lighting under, you know, obviously very difficult twenty-twenty, um, circumstances. Uh, very proud of the event, you know, I was asked, uh, by Sandy Post, what I thought of it, and I, I said, I thought it was everything Sandy was about. It was resilient, innovative, and incredibly special, which it was, and when I think about, um. What the Chamber of Commerce did earlier with their trick or treat, uh, trail. Uh, our community and our different groups and organizations have just really done a great job of really showing what is possible. Uh, rather than just, uh, canceling events and, and not having, uh, wonderful events that happen here in Sandy. So, thank you to everybody that was part of that, really was, I think, an example, and, um, I'm very proud of it. Uh, so, at the next swearing in, um, ceremony at the installation, I, I will again have some remarks. Uh, that are going to try to look forward over the next two years as to what I as mayor hope, uh, we accomplish and, and tackle and goal setting. Uh, I think a lot of us, uh, are aware of those things, such as the updated comp plan and master, uh, as well as a, a master plan and planning effort. For the Sandy Community Campus, uh, one thing also though is, is, is our main street. Uh, I, I think as a council, we need to focus tremendously on our main street over the next couple of years. Uh, it's, it's going to be devastated, I worry, as a result, a lot of these mandates that are coming down from the governor's office for COVID nineteen. Uh, and one of the issues I wanted to, I, I bring it up now, uh, instead of waiting until then, is because I do want, um, this council. Uh, to possibly look at something at our next meeting, and that is, is, is with the shutdown, you'd be, be noticing these outdoor seating. Um, off things that are happening at these different restaurants, uh, some have been able to afford those and to move forward with those. It's, uh, terribly expensive for others to be able to do so. We're talking about price tags of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Um, last time, uh, when we were on, when this first happened, meaning the first shutdown. We were able to find some money in our urban renewal fund that went out for a business relief program, those funds were then reimbursed by the future. Uh, CARE Act dollars, so those are still in existence and available since we've got reimbursement from those. And we also have the possibility of another CARE-type act proposal coming through Congress that's looking more and more possible every day for reimbursement. So, uh, I guess what I'm looking to do is to get, um, council temperature on, um, on getting staff. Develop some kind of program for our main street, for outdoor seating, uh, so that some of our, I, I'm thinking obviously of restaurants and bars. But any rest, it, really any, uh, business that needs this outdoor capability to be able to apply for some, some sort of grant. Uh, with the city of Sandy to be able to make that happen. Is there, um, you know, is there any people that are for it or against it at this time where we can kind of, where, I'm not saying let's go do it. But to have that proposed, some kind of program proposed to us at our next meeting, um, Counselor Schultz.
Totally for it, and, um, I just, along with that, I noticed a lot of our businesses, we're getting takeout a lot. And a lot of them are sort of being very creative with trying to provide these outdoor spaces, and it's not always super attractive. So, totally on board with any amount of grant money we can offer to help really make that look, um, inviting. And, um, helpful to them, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, and, and I do want to note that th- these need to be temporary, uh, obviously, we have the Sandy style, and we have different, uh, things that we've kind of looked the other way on. During this time, but obviously we're in unprecedented times, so we're making unprecedented moves right now. Any other counselor input? I saw thumbs up from Counselor Smallwood, I guess more importantly, I'm looking for thumbs down, uh, Counselor Lee.
Oh, I was just going to say that I support that too, I think there's some requirements about closure versus non-closure. And the staff can determine what those would be.
Right, thank you. And I, Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I just thinking, uh, I'm in favor of it, so there's that, but I also think we should be thinking about some of the other things that are going on. I was down at the food market, see it this past, uh, week, and I was thinking about all the things that they're going through that they have. Just the outside to deal with, and they seem to be doing fairly well. Uh, but we need to think about all the fairness of how we apply to several different businesses, and without going to some horrendous expenses, so. In favor though.
Thank you, and, and to that, the way I'm thinking about this is urban renewal and, and, and staff for our businesses, we, we have to have businesses after all of this. We've got to do what we can so that these businesses remain, um, for us. Um, alright, well, thank you, Council, really appreciate that support, and we'll look to have that on our next agenda. Um, comp plan update, I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well, I, I remember, I, I think I said our last goal setting. Um, when we, uh, didn't fund that, that, you know, I think we're going to look ahead at some of the different proposals coming down the road and, and really regret that. And, and we've had Bailey Meadows, now Bull Run Terrace, that have come in front of us, and it really is my hope, uh, in this next goal setting. That we find a funding and a timeline plan for an updated master plan for growth. I think that this community is ready for that, in fact, I, I believe they're demanding it, and I as mayor am, am, am very hopeful that we, we have that. I mentioned that I'm not going to be supporting any other budget, um, in the future, that doesn't, that does not satisfy me that we are, uh, making. A great progress towards that goal, and I mean it, and I, I'm not going to, I am going to draw a line in the sand on that, so, very important to me. Uh, with that, Sandy Community Campus, very important, over the next couple of years, we tackled a, a lot of that tonight, and I look forward to those further conversations. Thank you to our Counselor Alex for participating in that, and really kind of starting the conversation of, of what the future of the Sandy Community Campus. Uh, is going to look like, and my final item before we get out of here is today is Pearl Harbor Day. And also Olivia's eighth birthday, Olivia Polia, my daughter, and so I just wanted to say happy birthday, uh, to Olivia. Uh, with that, I will call this meeting, uh, to a close, remember to stick around for the executive session, thank you, Council.